Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, April 30th, 2025. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website, and for guest speakers joining us at the table, please do not turn off your microphones. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith, Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. And our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
I'm Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Oakland. You know, I've been educated at the University of Oxford and the University of Pittsburgh and many other institutions. I stand for, as I have for a decade here in this place, for uncensored freedom of speech and freedom of speech and public comment during council meetings. I'm a Global Intelligence Society candidate for President of the United States, 2028, Global Information Intelligence Network.net. The Global Intelligence Society is the social policy extension-
Recording in progress.
... of the CGSII, the Center for Global Studies, international interdisciplinary, Pennsylvania Corporation 2831602, which I founded in 1999. A concern of this council is local city government viability. This is consistent with my 2028 Initiative Three Local Government Primacy. So I offer a number of different resources and references that have to do with the improvement of local government, which I can do, and I do do. This is from the National Academy of Sciences. Anybody here have a letter from the National Academy of Sciences inviting you to participate in a colloquium? I think not. This is from the Massachusetts Institute of Technology inviting me to renew my membership in the International Society for the Arts Sciences and Technology. They publish a journal called Leonardo. This is from the IBC, which is the International Biographical Center at Cambridge University. They think that I'm one of the few thousand people in the world that has top-tier intelligence and intellect, and they did a biography of me a few years ago and renewed that. Anybody here have that kind of invitation? And I, you know, I think that, you know, respect is a matter of value of the work that somebody does. Now, from whom do you think respect for my work matters more? From the institutions, and there's very few of them that I've referred to, that I think I want respect, or from you? Or from Ms. Warwick in particular, from her fifth-grade behavior from yesterday? Well, it's very clear that I take the former to be the case rather than the latter. The email versions of my public comments are being transmitted citywide and nationwide to thousands of people. And by the way, I have this check here for $500,000. You know, CGSII check. Now, are you going to invite the solicitor over here to check this out? Or is that a kind of ruse that you use?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ann Davis.
Good morning, City Councilperson. I'm in an echoey hallway of a building. I register to ask your support of the two ordinance before you. I've resided in Lawrenceville since May of 2000. Over the years, I've removed every bit of grass from my property, both front and back, in support of gardening plants of all sorts, including annuals, perennial, wildflower shrubs, and five types of pollinators purchased from Fifth. As a result of these, I've not only increased the numbers of observable bees, butterflies, and birds locally, but now also delight in launching crane mantas that hatch thousands into our yard and contiguous yards every year. Thankfully, my nearby Uber gardening neighbors alerted me to these ordinances several days ago. I am happy to have this opportunity to express my support and to invite yours. Further, I then enlisted others in District Seven directly after I was notified. In a densely packed urban setting, it is important to have gardeners willing to devote considerable portions of their plot to plants that will naturally exceed the height of typical annuals observed yearly. Creating gardens, for example, that finches visit yearly because they know they will feed some echinacea seed in the fall is invaluable. The impact on camaraderie among neighbors who can and want to garden, in addition to the beauty afforded to those who cannot, is vital and valuable to the community's collective mental health. Gardening with the protection and support provided by these portions will undoubtedly increase residents' interest, education, plant sharing, and the expansion of healthy plant diversity citywide. I extend my leafy thanks to each of you, and in particular Barbara Warwick, and hope you will vote to enable these ordinances to truly take root in Pittsburgh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Having exhausted, thank you very much. Having exhausted the registered speakers, I would like to take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Are there any speakers wishing to come to the podium?
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's at the top of the hill up upon Beaufort. First, I have a red alert. The citizens in the Hill District want to know, where is Stan, the produce man? That is the white man that sells produce up in the community, who treats us with much respect. He was the one, there was a woman having a stroke, and as I was coming through, he was calling me. Get over here, Yvonne. And I come over, I say, what are you calling me for? And the woman was actually having a stroke. He said, help her. At that time, there came a white woman, and she could also see this woman, and I could tell she was actually having a stroke. She couldn't move. And I said to her, I was saying, I know you can hear me. We know that you're having something wrong with you, and we're calling the paramedics. And this white woman stayed with her, and she hugged her, and she said, we're here, we're here. Now, the reason why I'm saying the color is because that was a black woman, and this white woman and white produce man were more concerned about this woman than what you as councilman, when we come down here to speak to you. I think you don't really understand what I'm saying, and I'm saying this. I don't care that you don't know, but I care that you care to know. I try to tell you, when I'm talking, you're just talking, you're on the computer, you're on the cellphone, even on your tablets. And Mr., your wife, Chelsea Wagner, I've been knowing her for years, and I have much respect for her. Like I told her, her and Kathleen Mulligan. Kathleen Mulligan was just a lawyer. She became the head judge of this Allegheny County. She taught me, and she taught me well. You just think I just come down here to actually just B-I-T-C-H? No. I come to let you know, we are dying because of the rules that you make. Please understand that. I'm not just saying that. I'm telling you, you make the rules and we die. Like when you had, if the police feel frightened, then they can just shoot and kill you if you look at them, because that young boy was running. He turned around and looked, and the police shot him dead. Shot him dead, and I said it was a massacre, and that's what it was, because you made the decision that if policemen feel frightened, he has a gun. Why would he be frightened? The boy's running. When I saw him, I screamed, I busted out crying. They killed that young boy. They killed him. It was a massacre, because you say, if you feel frightened. When I come down, I speak loud, so you're frightened of me, so you got to put me out? This is my tone of voice. I went to college, I was taught to speak. When I speak, I'm supposed to look around the room and make sure everybody knows, not just look at one person. Like Kraus, face the front. Come on, you just got to do better than this.
Thank you very much. Are there any further speakers? Any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee, and we have one deferred paper, Bill 1675.
Bill 1675, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Property in the 23rd Ward in the First Council District of the City of Pittsburgh, acquired by the City of Pittsburgh at tax sale.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1675, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. New papers, Bill 1748.
Bill 1748, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the New Pittsburgh Courier Doing Business as Real Times Inc. for Legal Advertisements Published on February 5, 2025, in Connection with City of Pittsburgh Quiet Title Actions for an Amount Not to Exceed
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1748, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1749.
Bill 1749, Resolution Authorizing 11 Open-End Professional Services Agreements with Five Vendors to Provide Professional Services on an On-Call Basis as Required Related to Special Events Services as Needed by the Various Departments of the City of Pittsburgh, each agreement being at an amount not to exceed $750,000 annually for a three-year term and providing for funding of the costs thereof.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1749, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1772.
Bill 1772, Resolution Amending and Supplementing the Rules of Council to Provide for Contingent Presiding Officers over Regular Meetings of Council in the Event of Absences.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Council President, I wanted to give you the opportunity to elaborate if you wanted to, but you do not need to.
No, I'm more than willing to. This was a few weeks ago. I was away, and Councilman Wilson, who would have normally as pro, chaired the meeting. I'd asked Councilwoman Strasburger to chair in our absence, of which you had graciously agreed. However, I forgot, and this was on me, that we needed to waive the rules in order for that to occur, and so you all appropriately acted during that meeting to ensure that Councilwoman Strasburger could indeed actually chair the meeting. What this bill actually does is now put in place the order which members actually chair the meeting, so that we're not stuck in that predicament again, but rather acknowledging if for whatever reason the president is not available, and if for reason the pro temp is not available, that the finance chair will be the next in line to actually then chair that meeting, and on so down the line. So this is, for me, just sort of a rules of council to ensure that we're not in that predicament again. So I thank you all for working through it two weeks ago or three weeks ago at this point, but this is just to ensure that we're not having to deal with that again.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, I just want to thank council for working that out that day. I, you know, normally I'd be here, and this is my first time back in person for a while. You know, the electric being off and a bunch of kids running around the house because they don't have school will get you to come in person instead of trying to work virtually today. But recent surgery had, to better my health, really just kind of prevented me from coming in and sparked this whole conversation of who's next in line to, you know, to chair these, I'm sorry, to chair the regular meetings and probably even, I'm sure we have rules around this meeting too, but I just want to thank council.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I wanted to thank our council legislative manager, Sean Carter, for bringing this to our attention and to helping us work through this process and this bill. So, thanks very much, Council President. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1772, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices. Is there a motion on invoices?
To move.
Second.
Discussion? I did have a note on invoices. We do have, we do have a number of invoices for dollar rent-a-car to gather that totaled $24,000, and it appears that there was a backlog with our police for these invoices, which is why we're getting a big batch all at once. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Invoices are approved. That moves us on to P cards. Is there a motion on P cards?
To move.
Second.
Discussion? I also have a note for P cards. We see three charges to E.H. Griffith that together total $6,300, and they are for different divisions and different, one's for the Schenley Division, one is for Frick Division, but they are separate, we've confirmed with our budget office, they are separate invoices and separate purchases made on separate dates. So not, none of these actually requires a waiver of the rules. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of P cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. P cards are approved. That moves us on to Public Safety and Wellness Committee, chaired by Councilman Coghill.
Deferred Papers, Bill 1531, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter Into a Clinical Affiliation Agreement with Community College of Allegheny County to Enact a Precepting Program, Allowing Students to Learn Professional Skills from City Employees in the Bureau of Emergency Medical Services for Training and Educational Purposes at Zero Cost to the City.
Motion to hold for four weeks.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of a four-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bill will be held for four weeks. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, chaired by Councilperson Warwick.
New Papers, Bill 1750, Resolution Authorizing the Directors of the Departments of Finance and Mobility and Infrastructure to Take Actions Necessary for Recordation of Temporary Construction Easements over Certain City-Owned Parcels in Order to Advance a Project for Rehabilitation, Reconstruction, and Repair of Smithfield Street in the City of Pittsburgh at No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1750, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1751.
Bill 1751, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works and/or the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter Into an Agreement, Agreements, and/or Amendments with Riverlife for the Purpose of Allowing Access to the Riverlife Barge from the Allegheny Landing Dock at No Cost to the City.
Motion to approve. Discussion? Second.
With discussion, Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, so if we could, Gavin, you want to come up to the table? We don't, you know, Director Hornstein is not here. He is obviously dealing with lots of fallen trees and whatnot, so, so yeah, thanks Gavin. If you want to introduce yourself and then just talk a little bit about what we're looking at here.
Hi, everybody. Thanks, council, for having me this morning. We're really excited about this project, and I'll say, Riverlife is committed to community engagement in all of our projects, so we're typically out there well in advance, doing work in the community and sharing what these projects might look like. This one's a bit of a special case because we wanted to make sure that this was a sort of fun surprise for this summer, so this has not really been shared publicly yet, but as you've heard in the resolution, we're bringing a barge to town. So the intent is to have that sighted at Allegheny Landing. The barge will have, and if you, in that folder there, want to pass out, we've got some visuals. Thank you very much. The barge will be landing at the Allegheny Landing Dock, which we've restored with coordination with the city in the last couple of years, so it'll actually have a sort of drawbridge that drops down onto that barge and enables people fully accessible to get onto this platform that will sit out into the channel. It will have a concession space which will be powered by solar, so it's not connected into the grid. It's all sort of self-sufficient. A few of the things that I want to note here is that we've gone through quite a number of novel permitting processes for this effort, because it is a sort of strange space, in the regulatory space, but we are actively working on that. This license agreement is an important and sort of capstone part of that approvals process, and that is for specifically the landing this year. The intent is to be out there for the summer warmer months, so late May, early June through October of the year. That's all contingent upon these final permits that we're working toward, but that's the hope, and we will have that be open and available to the public at all hours where we can have somebody staffed onboard. You do not have to purchase anything to be there. It's really meant to be an extension of that park. The last thing I'll say is that we're excited about the possibilities of this barge, one, being able to move, because it's got fixed pilings basically attached to the barge itself, so it could move around the Pittsburgh Pool to other neighborhoods, which we want to support. And then it also has the ability to change shape. It's actually 10 modular sections that can move around in different orientations, and so we're excited to bring this to you in new iterations in future years, but this is year one, and we hope you approve so we can get this thing out on the water.
Great, thank you. So just, this seems very cool. So this is, so this is like the first year we'll do it, or you know, if we pass it here, and then with the hope of future years. I'm just sort of thinking, I'm thinking about the draft. I know that's in April, I believe, so is that going to be maybe still too cold? I don't know.
April can be a challenging month on the rivers from a water flow perspective, so it can be somewhat dangerous at times to have vessels out there on the water, but we have been having conversations about whether that might be possible and be happy to support so long as the weather cooperates.
Got it. And where do you keep this thing when it's not out on?
We're working with an operator up in Cotanning, so it's stored there with his other barges, and we'll be fleeted there during the winter months to keep it safe.
Okay, I don't think I have any other questions.
Thank you. We have Councilman Wilson followed by Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say thank you for involving me in the conversation years ago. I'm looking, thinking maybe it was probably back in 2021, 2022, discussing this. It just makes you realize how long it takes to even come to this point.
It does.
So thanks for all the great work that Riverlife does, because, you know, without organizations like yourself, you know, we would be, you know, be challenged. So it's great to have several extra arms that are all helping out here and looking forward to it, and I know people, I know that this isn't just exclusive for my district. You know, everyone in the city and everyone, you know, practically that visits Pittsburgh will be in a stock at some point, so thanks for all your efforts. Thanks, Councilman.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Gavin, for the information. This does seem really, really cool to me, you know? So my first question is, this is not your typical barge. This has like a floor, like a finished floor, basically. It's like a stage.
Yeah, I mean, it will be steel, but it is a flat finished surface. You can roll on it.
It's not just jumping on.
It's got some dimples, but yeah, it'll be finished in a way.
Because it looks real high somewhere, you know? And there's going to be like a little rooftop here of some sort?
Yeah.
It's on it now, or is it?
It's not yet. It will be, and we're working with an artist actually to do a very interesting sort of natural shade canopy structure to keep it cool.
Got it. So I guess you're going to have to have like a walkway, or is it going to be fixed right to the shore?
The gangway will be attached to the barge, and it'll actually be a sort of drawbridge mechanism, so it'll come down and then up for safety.
Right, right. And you say the pylons, basically it's anchors? You could lift the anchors and?
Well, it's-
They go actually into the riverbed, or no?
The pilings, they're called spuds when they're attached to the barge, do go into the riverbed, and those will be supplemented by some anchors at the back of the barge in case there are any-
Something like yesterday happens, right?
Suspenders.
This thing will be going on like a speedboat. So no, it sounds really interesting. Who is going to run the food concession and that stuff?
If it's okay, we did do a public process for vendors. We haven't announced that yet, and I think my director of communications might be mad if I did.
Yeah, so there were people bidding for, actively bidding-
There were people who bid on it.
-to run the concessions, basically. Probably restaurateurs in and around, probably the North Shore mostly, or?
Throughout the city.
Yeah, okay, okay. You don't need life reservers or anything like that.
We will have life rings, throw bags, and AED and all of the fun safety things. We're working directly with Public Safety and River Rescue to make sure that our safety and operations manual complies with anything that they want to see.
Got it. So if approved, when is the earliest we could see this?
I'm going to say at this point, realistically, sometime in June is a pretty safe bet.
For this summer, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it for me, Madam Chair. Thank you, and thank you, Gavin.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I recall visiting the site where this was going to be at least a year and a half ago, maybe, and so I know that the funding was an issue, and I know that, you know, just as Councilman Wilson mentioned, all the bureaucratic processes, you have to go through at all levels of government, so congratulations on getting to this point. Very, very exciting.
Thank you. It's been a fun learning process.
And what better way for those visiting Pittsburgh for a convention or for some other reason to see the city than by, you know, by boat on our rivers? Thank you. All right. Further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1751, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Appreciate the visuals, too.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, chaired by Councilman Wilson. Deferred Paper, Bill 1579.
Bill 1579, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title Nine, Zoning, Article Two, Base Zoning Districts, Chapter 903, Residential Zoning Districts to Reduce Required Minimum Lots.
Motion to approve. Discussion?
Second.
With discussion, Councilman Wilson.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone that came to the public hearing, and it was very, everyone gave very thoughtful and, you know, really pointed comments as to what this bill does, what the concerns are, and want to thank this body for taking up this bill to discuss it and hopefully pass it, because what I believe, you know, this bill does is a lot. And quite frankly, you know, it's something that I'm quite kind of embarrassed that back in 2020, when I got in office, it wasn't the first bill that I introduced or worked on, because, you know, a bill like this, it's, it's being touted as, I know it's being touted as a bill that solves the problems of IZ, that some, you know, to make it work, inclusionary zoning, IZ. But though it may be the case for units that are above 20, but just recently, there was a variance that was denied for five units in the city, and this, this bill would solve that. I know there is concerns that, you know, developers just make money, and the Lord is representing to make money, but quite frankly, the, everyone in the business makes more money when we have more restrictive laws. They just quite, they get more money when there's court cases on variance, so, you know, I don't think this is, you know, the answer to making IZ work. We all know that to make inclusionary zoning work, there's, there's a lot of work to do. Currently in Lawrenceville, with the current, recent current projects there, and those don't pencil out unless government's involved to fund them, and they have been funded by government, so we have to make sure that, I'm sorry, the current IZ bill that's written that was in the package doesn't do that. It doesn't have any funding attached to it, and so for us just to say that, you know, we should wait on this bill, I think is, would not be the right move at this point. This bill is a straightforward fix to an outdated part of the zoning code. It reduces the square footage required to build on a lot, nothing more. Contextual setbacks, height limits, and other protections remain in place. This change helps us unlock vacant land- This change helps us unlock vacant land. All the work that we do at the land bank, every time we celebrate the land bank, we are celebrating, you know, the great work they do, but we could be doing so much more. And, you know, this bill really provides an opportunity for all families, especially working families, to, you know, make housing more affordable, more accessible, and it's just a better use of our neighborhoods instead of vacant abandoned, you know, parcels in between houses. So it's time to, I believe it's time to get this done, and I'm proud to move forward today.
Thank you. Councilperson Warwick.
Yeah, thanks. So, you know, just a few thoughts. Obviously, this, I don't believe this was on the agenda until about 10 minutes before the meeting started, which, you know, given that we had a public hearing that was clearly, you know, divide, you know, the public is divided, at least if we're basing it on that hearing, right? We had about half of the people who are very concerned about affordable housing and inclusionary zoning, who are in favor of this bill but want to see it, you know, come to fruition together with the requirement that units, you know, that projects with 20 units or more have 10% of those units reserved as affordable so that we can, you know, create neighborhoods that are for folks of all income levels. So, and then the other half, of course, were our, our YIMBY folks who, you know, are anti-IZ no matter which way you slice it. So I think that sort of slipping this in quickly before a meeting the morning after a major natural disaster is an interesting choice. That said, you know, as far as the bill itself, I agree. This is a good bill. That is why, you know, almost immediately when I came to office and all these same folks, right, our pro-housing Pittsburgh folks, architects, developers, et cetera, you know, when we were, you know, saying we need zoning reform, and this was one of the number one issues, that my team sat down with all these folks to craft, craft this legislation and then, and then have it, and then, you know, press for the administration to include it in the housing, in the, in the, in the package. So again, you know, I've said this over and over again, we just have two, you know, we clearly have two views. There's, there's the view that, that we should, you know, just do everything we can to allow developers to build as much as they want, wherever they want. And, and by the way, there is, we do have a tax abatement for affordability. So if you choose to do affordability, whether it's in the IZ district now or just in general, you get an abatement for that, I believe. So, so there is, I'll, you know, I'll let Councilwoman Gross speak to that, I'm sure, if she's online. But at any rate, I just feel like, you know, we do have a public hearing coming up about Councilman Sharlin's bill in a couple of weeks, I believe. And, you know, I just, I really feel that this needs to be, I am, I am a big fan of this bill. I, you know, my team and I worked to write this and put it into the Housing Needs Assessment Package. I am very dismayed that as sort of the, the, the major incentive, the one thing that the developer community wanted, you know, in good faith, my team and I worked to get this in because it is important. We do need to be able to build more, you know, we shouldn't be restricting our, you know, how many units we can build, you know. This bill makes sense, but it also is sort of the carrot, so to speak, that will help IZ move along, and, and that was the idea, was to make IZ more palatable. But if we pass this first, before we do IZ, you know, given the votes on this council, given, you know, then, then to me, it just feels like IZ is dead. There will be, there will be no motivation for anybody. Well, and there should be motivation. The motivation, in my opinion, should be to create, to avoid creating neighborhoods like we have in the Strip where it's just, you know, playground for wealthy tech folks, to actually create, you know, use those neighborhoods to create mixed income communities like we have in Pittsburgh, because that's what's so, that's what's so great about Pittsburgh, is it is this city where you can, you know, you can be a Google exec and go to a, you know, go to a bar or go to a party and be, you know, hanging out with people who are, you know, from, from all walks of life, doing all different kinds of jobs, whether they're a roofer or whatever. That's what I love about my neighborhood. But, you know, I, yeah, I'm just, I, I'm, I'm obviously a big fan of this bill. It's very good, it's a good bill, but I'm very dismayed to see it move forward without this council working to make sure that lower income and working folks also have a piece and that our, and that our market rate developers also play a part in, in creating affordable housing in our city, because our taxpayers are certainly playing a role. Our taxpayers, you know, our, our money, taxpayer dollars, everybody in the city of Pittsburgh is paying a lot in order to make sure that we can keep this city affordable. And I feel that our market rate developers should be participating in that. There are lots of ways for them to do that using public dollars. And this was the real juicy thing. This was the thing they wanted. This was the biggest thing they wanted. I know there's like the parking stuff, and there's the ADUs, you know, but this was the, this was the, you know, this was the big prize. And, yeah, anyway, I think it's, I think it's unfortunate that we're not doing them both together, which is how, how the Housing Needs Assessment Package was brought to us, and now it's, it's being sort of broken up bit by bit. Anyway, I've, I've said this all before, and I'll just, I'll leave, all right, well, I would like to do a motion to hold for two weeks, just to kind of let folks weigh in. I'll put that on the table if I can.
We have, I'm, I'm gonna ask that you hold your motion to hold, let others say their piece. We can do a motion to hold, and then we'll take a vote, and then we'll, yeah, move from there. Okay. So we have Councilman Coghill, and then I know Councilwoman Gross is online, wish to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I will say this, it sounds like all parties are in agreement that this is a good thing. I am as well. I think, to me, it's, I'm a firm believer in order to increase housing of all sorts, including affordable, is through zoning, not through mandatory action to include inclusionary zoning with developers. When you start subdividing lots and lose parking requirements, it makes it affordable to that general contractor to come in and build two, whether it be tiny homes or whatever. So, so I don't think that's in dispute as far as like who agrees with the, the bill that's in front of us today. It sounds like everybody agrees with it. I am not looking at this bill as leverage, or I feel like maybe you are, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Warwick, toward getting IZ in there. Maybe the developers gave you that impression, or somebody gave you that impression, but I'm adamantly against inclusionary zoning, so this to me is the direction. And thank you, Councilman Wilson, for pushing the conversation to where it should be, I feel, in zoning and planning and, you know, making it easier for people to build. So, so, so with that, yeah, I'm in full support. I don't see any reason to hold this up when everybody's in agreement, and it's at least doing action. Where the other two bills, you know, this will eventually be a part of, whether it be Councilman Sharlin's bill, the administration's bill, or a combination of both, but this belongs in either or, so I see no reason in holding up, so. Thank you, and thank you, Councilman Wilson, for, you know, working on this issue.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Where you go? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Appreciate it. So I just want members to understand that there have been apartment buildings at 350 total units completed under the IZ in Lawrenceville. There's another 267 near completion in the IZ in Lawrenceville. There are 20 unit projects near completion in the IZ in Lawrenceville. And I'm working on my phone, and I think I could actually make that number longer. There's a building which you can drive by and see on Melwood outside of Bushell in the Oakland IZ, which is, gosh, at least 10 stories tall, nearly completed in the IZ. So members who don't have any inclusionary zoning in their districts, who don't see the buildings right in front of them that have inclusionary zoning units, maybe should not make assumptions about projects in the inclusionary zoning districts. Moving on to minimum lot size. Absolutely, this is something that is, makes sense for a lot of reasons. I agree that on the small parcels, it's what some people call the, lots of parts of my district, the townhouses or the tiny single-family homes that were built 100 years ago on narrow streets and tiny lots to be close to trolley lines were built without a minimum lot size and without setbacks, basically, from the edge of the parcel. So I'm entirely supportive. I do also want to remind council members, again, who do not have any inclusionary zoning in their districts, that every project that includes 10% at 50% affordable, which is what is proposed, to go beyond Bloomfield, Bushell, Lawrenceville, and Oakland, where it is now, to move beyond that, automatically qualifies for an additional 60 feet of height. If you do not do 10% at 50% AMI of the units, you don't get a bonus, two floors of apartments, right? So imagine you're on a site where it allows you to do five floors of apartments. You opt to do, you can opt to do it now. You could opt to do it now in South Side. You could opt to do it now in North Side. 10% at 50% AMI. You automatically get two more floors, and trust me, on large sites, that can be another 80 units. These are very large buildings. That is in place right now. You also get a LERTA that this council, before you served on it, put in place that allows for up to $250,000 of tax abatement per year for 10 years. So I think those are already bonuses that are in place. There is no reason to rush this through because this imaginary suggestion, right, this, this kind of false suggestion, that this is going to unlock projects that aren't penciling right now. This council has already, over the years, put bonuses in place that are there, already on the books, and that developers use. So I also think that, that this discussion should be, it is part of the package that some members of council have blocked for council discussion, and I would rather take it up when we can take up the other package. I think it makes sense as part of the other package. It's, it's not bad language, as Councilwoman Warwick's office wrote it. I, I support the language, but it is meant to be a part of a bigger, more impactful housing reform. So I support it. Thank you. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion first round? Okay, I will say, yeah, oh, sorry.
No worries.
Please, please proceed, Council President.
Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't be the person today. Power, PPS not being, and PPS being closed, et cetera, et cetera. So towards everyone else's comments, I'm supportive of the bill, so I'll say that upfront. But I am torn, as we sit here today, on whether or not, if we chose to vote this today, would I actually support it. And it's not about the bill, it is about the process. Councilman Wilson mentioned all the speakers who came down for the public hearing a week ago. Probably two to one, those speakers, what they said were, yes, we all support this bill, but we want to have the fuller conversation. We want to have this conversation in context with all the other things. And while, yes, each bill that is sort of talked about as the quote-unquote "package" are independent bills, so we can absolutely take them independently, I want to be clear about that, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be having the fuller conversation, which is what was asked of us. Unfortunately, we're not having the fuller conversation because council voted to hold a bill, an IZ bill, for six weeks that I believe comes back up for discussion next week. And we can't have the fuller conversation until we deal with that. And so it would be my preference to not vote this until we have disposed or voted in some capacity on that bill that will come up for discussion next week, that will then allow for us to begin talking about the full conversation of, yes, IZ, yes, minimum lot size, yes, accessory dwelling units, yes, parking requirements, restricting parking requirements that various members have worked on. Deb, obviously, I'm not sorry, I'm sorry, Barb obviously initially worked on this bill. I know Councilman Schlossberger, you've worked on the parking stuff a lot, and we've all had our own various opinions, but we're not having the full conversation, which I think we should, which is what the public asked us to do. So I would support the two-week hold so that we can, next week, have the IZ bill before us, which needs hell for a public hearing. So if, if, if there's indeed the motion to hold for two weeks, I'll be certainly supportive of that. I'm torn on how I would actually vote today, because what I heard loud and clear was, yes, we want you to do this. No, there's no rush to get this done today. We can hold it for a couple of weeks. In my personal opinion, dispose of a bill that will require seven members to vote for it. There's definitely not seven members that are gonna vote for it. I can tell that with absolute certainty. And then move this bill and the other bills forward, whether those are as individual bills or whether they're all on the table at the same time, that's a conversation we can collectively have, but I think that's the most prudent thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to second round in a minute. I'm gonna make some remarks first. So first, I do want to thank, of course, Councilman Wilson for bringing this up and for his work on this, but I want to thank Councilperson Warwick as well for working on this, you know, up until the time that we were really debating this. Now, I was not aware that her, she and her office were working on this and were so laser-focused on it, kind of similar to the work that, you know, our office did on the parking reform bill. So wanted to say that first. I want to acknowledge that, you know, there's this talk about this being part of one big package, and there's been this community process, and the community is asking for this, this big omnibus zoning and housing package. But I have to admit, the process has been flawed from the beginning. Taking all of these bills altogether has actually diluted the amount that the community has been able to weigh in on each individual bill. And let's not forget that when we took all of these bills to the community over the course of several months, and I credit city planning for the time that they spent with the community, the process was still flawed because we had community homes lumped in together, confusing people, and all they got to hear about, or all they really cared about, was mostly, at least in the community meetings I was a part of, community homes, and, which is a totally separate thing, and inclusionary zoning. They didn't get to really weigh in on parking minimums. They didn't really get to hear about and weigh in and think, have the mental space to think about ADUs. And now we've had this process on one kind of easier-to-manage, easier-to-digest bill, and I think that's the way to do it. Let's take it one bill at a time. Let's pass this today. Let's get it done. It can still be part of the package, and then let's move on to IZ and deal with that, because I can say on the record, I will happily continue to work on IZ, get the bill right, and get it done for the city. And then let's move on to the next one. So we have ample time. And then let's move on to the next one. So we have ample time on each bill to actually work in community, hear the feedback, continue to work with, um, neighbors, with, um, housing justice advocates, with developers, as we have been, and, and get it done. But I think it's the right thing to do to get this done today, and I will fully commit to continuing to work on IZ after this. I also disagree that this is the thing, this is the nugget, that will get IZ over the finish line for developers in their minds. It's not what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that they need financing and that whatever LERTA we, a program we have now is not enough to be able to keep up with the rising cost of building, uh, to keep up with, now we have tariffs that we're dealing with. It is expensive to build. We need more gap financing to help, um, contrary to what we had in Lawrenceville, in the Strip District, very hot markets. We need more financing to be able to get those over the finish line, and that's what I'm gonna be laser-focused on in getting some sort of, you know, um, bill, um, over the finish line with, with council members and with others, um, uh, on, on future IZ bill. So wanted to state that, um, I'm supportive of moving forward with this today personally and think, um, you know, it can still be part of an omnibus package, even if it's split up into individual bills. Rhetorically, it can be, it can still hang together. Thank you. Um, we'll move on to second round. I know that Councilmember Warwick had her hand up and maybe others as well.
Senator, I'd like second round as well. Thank you.
Sorry, what was that, Councilwoman?
I'd like second round as well.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Um, yeah, so just quick, I mean, I, Councilwoman, I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I would say that given that IZ is the hardest one, that to me would be the one that we should address first, right? That's the one that everyone is talking about. That is the one that is where we have, you know, where we have so much debate. So for me, that seems like the one that we should tackle, right? Get that one, because the other ones, right. The other ones all seem fairly straightforward, right? The parking minimums, the, the AD, I know the ADUs are a little tricky, you know, but without the IZ, and then, you know, and I know there's also sort of transit, but without the IZ, I mean, that is the crux, right? That is the crux, is do we require, which, which, you know, many cities do, and by the way, uh, city, many cities, their, their IZ process evolves, right? Like they, but, but you gotta take that first step. And that, and, and so that is why I feel like we should be doing, I mean, if we are going to break this up, so it isn't a bad idea, right? Like really let everybody talk about each one. Why would we not do the one that everyone is the most interested in, the public? I'm not talking about developers. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the public, right, who we represent. This is the one that they wanna talk about, right? This is the one where, um, and, and, and again, and I think there was one speaker who really, I, I don't remember who it was, um, I can sort of picture him, but, um, you know, he said, we, we, we don't know, that there really ultimately is no conclusive data about whether IZ, you know, hinders or, or improves the number of houses, right? Like the, the data is very unclear, but what we do know about IZ, what we do know is that it ensures that in every, um, large project, there are units that are, you know, made available to working-class people, right? Low to working-class people, right? We're talking nurses and teachers and, you know, um, custodians who clean our buildings, right? So, so when we do these projects in our, you know, in our high-density neighborhoods, because that's where IZ applies, right? It's in, you know, big buildings of 20 units or more, in our high-density neighborhoods, where people are working and recreating and doing all that, that the people who are supporting all of that, who are supporting that economy in those neighborhoods can also live in those neighborhoods. So that's what, that's what IZ ultimately is about. And, you know, for Councilman Coghill, I know you're stepping away, but, you know, one neighborhood that always comes to mind for me, um, because in my district, to be honest, I don't really have much in the, in terms of like the IZ zone, right? I don't have a lot of high-density space, like in, in my district, right? There's Squirrel Hill, but it's already highly built up, right? There's not a lot of room in Squirrel Hill. There's a few spots, right, but there's not a lot of room in Squirrel Hill or along Greenfield Avenue to be building giant buildings, right? But the, the community I think of the most, and what, what struck me is that, um, I know he's on the phone, but is, um, in Beachview, where the T goes through, right? And I, I sort of just, you know, not too long ago, took the T out to the South Hills Village Mall, and I was like, and it was sort of the first time I'd taken the T that far and out, and I was like, wow, like, this is so cool, like this community, which is, you know, currently a, a community with, you know, a lot of immigrants, right? It is very much like a, a, a working-class community right on the T, like, wow, this is right, what a great place to live, right on the T. And, and when we look at Pittsburgh, sort of the future of Pittsburgh, that to me seems like a place, like if you're looking to build, like, would be right there, right on the T-line. Take the T downtown, like, perfect, it's got transit, all of that. But if we did all of these other things, including the transit-oriented development, if we don't have the IZ, then everything that goes up there is, you know, market rate, and of course, we all know that it, that, that doing these kind of, you know, I mean, a luxury building is a building with a swimming pool and like, you know, the, these sort of low-cost amenities that make it so that you can charge a lot more in rent, right? That, that's why we have these types of projects that come up. That's why folks don't do, you know, developers don't do just kind of sort of modest apartments that are just kind of like regular, because you can't get as much rent. But if you throw in a pool and like some, a nice gym and some other amenities, then, wow, now you can charge like, you know, 1,500 to $3,000. So that's how, you know, that's how you make your, your money on these like very low costs to build amenities that result in significantly higher rent. So if you take a neighborhood like Beachview with the T, where I, I mean, that is, I, there could not be a better place to build in Pittsburgh, right? Right on that T-line. And you don't have any affordability requirements around big projects that go up, because what, what an ideal place to have a bunch of big buildings, high-density, right on that T-line, right? Where people can, you know, don't need to drive, whatever can come into the city. If you don't have any affordability, then the folks who are living there now, that, you know, that, that immigrant, you know, like, you know, Latin American population, whatever, that makes it such a cool neighborhood now, those folks get priced out. And you lose that. And then you just get your sort of generic, you know, generic kind of lululemon, that's not, you know what I mean? Just kind of like tech industry, and you, you, you lose that, and that's, and, and, and that's something that you see in, in, um, in other neighborhoods, and it's a shame. And I feel like we really have an opportunity, because we're at the, you, we've already started to do that some, right? There are neighborhoods like East Liberty and a few others, a little bit in the South Side, where you're kind of losing that, that great diversity of economic and, you know, racial, but really economic diversity that makes Pittsburgh so cool. And this IZ will help us preserve that in, you know, as, as our city grows. And so I just wanted to, I just want, because Councilman, I know you say a lot, like, I, you know, but, you know, that's what I, that's where IZ has an effect. It's not in your residential, it's not in your single-family residential, right? Like, it's not in your Lincoln Place or your Greenfield or whatever. Like, that has no, you can't build 20-unit buildings in those neighborhoods. It's only on these corridors where you allow, you know, where high-density, you know, apartment buildings are allowed to be built. So I just, I, 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 I think, you know, but I, I just wanna make that clear, because when we say citywide IZ, and I think that is actually a flaw in kind of the, 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 the language, the marketing around this IZ bill, is this concept of, of, just the word "citywide," because it's not city, "citywide," meaning you can't just build a 20-unit apartment building plop in the middle of Swisshelm Park. You can't do it. Swisshelm Park is a single-family residential neighborhood, and the vast majority of our neighborhoods are, this is only for those corridors, right? Where we're looking at somewhere like the Strip or Lawrenceville, you know, which, you know, everyone wants, the hot neighborhoods, everyone wants to live there, and I feel like somewhere like Beachview along the T, like, that's, if, if I were to put my money down on Pittsburgh's next hotspot, like, to, to build and grow, it's right there. And to me, it seems worthwhile putting in a policy that allows the folks who are living there now to also, you know, some opportunity to, to, to stay. And keep that, keep, you know, what's so cool about that neighborhood, you know, keep it there. Anyway, that's, I guess I'm rambling now, but that's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, were you able to join back on?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, right, so I, I do hear the chair's concern that let's vote through the policies that we know have support, and yet I would ask my, the five members of this council who voted to, um, keep open a bill they knew was wrong, that did not have popular support, and that failed a planning commission that was a hostile amendment of the inclusionary zoning overlay. Um, to not be hypocritical here then, so let us dispose of the bill that we know is not, uh, good language, that we know does not have support, that we know there are not the votes to overturn the negative recommendation from our planning commission. Um, and yet, you know, they have voted to keep that open as leverage and should not then. If, if we are going to have a fulsome discussion, um, that bill should be disposed. Um, and then we can move forward with the discussion, uh, for language that will work. Um, and so that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anything further for second round? Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, well, first, I just wanna respond to you, Council, Councilwoman Warwick. Broadway Avenue in Beachview, uh, there is no room to build. There's no empty, maybe one or two empty lots. Um, we're not looking to like mow the place down and like build up so we could, you know, develop more affordable housing or, or, or housing in general. We're looking to, you know, keep a good housing stock that we have there, necessarily. But when I think IZ citywide, you know, I don't necessarily think of Broadway Avenue in Beachview. I agree with you, it's, it's a great spot. It's a great spot to, to invest in housing. Doesn't have to be super-expensive housing. I think that comes in the way of zoning, and I think it comes in the way of cutting the permitting process down and just making it easier for developers to wanna take on such a project. Um, I do believe, and I know because I talk to developers all the time, that it's hard enough for me to attract them into my district, let alone making them build two units at cost. It's just, I know everybody thinks developers are billionaires and, you know, they've got money to burn, but, you know, most projects are very tight budgets and very little leeway for them to, uh, build two affordable units on a 20-unit place. So the capacity's not there to build in Beachview, I will tell you, unless we start knocking buildings down and putting high rises there, which I don't think, I, I'm certainly not in favor of that. I don't think the neighborhood, we don't wanna lose our, you know, kind of charm that we have there. So, uh, so I don't think that's an option. When I think of an inclusionary zoning getting in the way of development in my district, I have a lot of spots like, uh, old churches, old schools, big areas, acres of area that are ripe for development, unless we mandate them to build 20 or, or 10% over 20 units. We would love housing in my district. I think there's a big market there for it. I try to talk to developers about it all the time. I think they just wanna be in hot markets like Lawrenceville and Bloomfield, and again, I'll say it again, and this is the truth. I've voted for inclusionary zoning in those neighborhoods because I felt it needed to pump the brakes on development, and I think it's proven to be right. So I'm not looking to pump the brakes on development in my district. I'm looking to start the engine, basically. Um, this will handicap, uh, developers, and they, I don't think will even look my way if we, uh, mandate that they have inclusionary zoning. So, so I don't think it's good for development in my district. I respect the other council districts. I try to look to see what you need when we vote for citywide issues such as this. Um, and I vote accordingly. That's why I voted for it. I voted for inclusionary zoning in all the districts that it, or all the neighborhoods that it currently exists. I think it works great that way, honestly, whether we're trying to, for my reasons, stunt the growth or just, you know, provide more affordable housing. I get that too. That's, and that's great that we can count units that are actually on the market that are affordable housing. But, um, not at the expense of no development in my district. IZ citywide will ensure that I feel like I won't get any development. That's just kind of my thought. And that's, comes from many conversations with developers. I, I know the market, I, I'm part of the market. You know, so, um, just my thoughts. I respect other districts. I, I wanna support what you feel was important in your district. I want you to do the same for me too. And that's what I'm asking in this. I wish we could just put this conversation to rest. I think we should just keep it as it is by neighborhood. Just makes sense to me, so. And I couldn't agree with you more, uh, Madam Chair, as to, let's pass the low-hanging fruit now. The things that we are sure of, because IZ citywide, we are, we're eons, I feel, away from getting this passed, I could tell you. I, I will fight it to the end. I, I know it's not good for my district, so. So let's pass the things that make sense, that are in front of us, that we all agree on, and then save IZ for last. So I completely disagree with Councilwoman Warwick. Instead of trying to tackle that first, then we get nothing done. We'll be sitting here two years from now, still with all these things on the table. Let's pass the things that we're all in agreement with, the things that work for all of our neighborhoods, and, you know, tackle IZ as it comes along. But, um, yeah, I just don't feel it's good for my neighborhood. I wish you all would respect that and vote accordingly for that. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion, second round? Seeing none. Councilmember Warwick, I know you had a motion you wished to offer.
Yeah, I mean, I was hoping to hold for two weeks so that we can talk about this, you know, more holistically with all the other pieces.
Making a motion?
Oh, motion to hold for two weeks.
Second.
Further discussion? Can we take a roll call vote on the motion to hold for two weeks, please? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Sharland.
No.
Mr. Coghill.
No.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Smith.
No.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
No.
Mrs. Strasburger, Chair.
No.
Three ayes, five noes.
Motion fails, so we have a motion to approve on the table. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 1579. Let's take a roll call vote on Bill 1579, um, in favor of passage. Affirmative recommendation.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
No.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Kell Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Abstain.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger, Chair.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Sorry, I missed the,
um, five ayes, one no, two abstentions.
Uh, affirmative recommendation on Bill 1579. New papers, Bill 1752.
Bill 15, or, I'm sorry, 1752. Resolution providing for the designation as an historic structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as Donnie's Place, located at 1226 Heron Avenue in the Polish Hill neighborhood in the 5th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property does not support the nomination, and there is no cost to the city.
Motion to hold for cablecast public hearing.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of, um, holding Bill 1752 for a cablecast public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
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 I will abstain.
Abstain as well.
Uh, motion passes. We, that moves us on to Bill 1753.
Bill 1753. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning Planning to enter into an agreement, agreements and/or amendments with the Museum of Contemporary Art for the purpose of loaning the city-owned Stephen Foster statue to Moca at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, discussion?
Councilperson Sharland.
Yes, is someone here to talk about that? I'm, I'm kind of curious how this is working here.
Good morning, Kevin Kounak, with the Department of City Planning.
All right, so, we are lending this statue to the museum, do we know how long we're giving it to them?
That's a great question. It's for the term of an exhibit they're proposing, so I think it's like, I can clarify that, but about a year.
Okay. Can they just keep it forever? This is a pretty terrible statue.
We would have it returned, and then it's an opportunity for a citywide discussion, I think, as part of the comprehensive planning process of how do we acknowledge art that has been decommissioned.
Okay. Where, where is the Museum of Contemporary Art?
Los Angeles.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you for the clarification, and, you know, I guess, in a year from now, we'll know what to do with that.
Yes, all right, looking forward to that, when, that discussion, yes. Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Coghill, followed by Councilperson Warwick.
Ladies first.
Well, so, I just wanted, because I, of course, have, as, you know, I have the Christopher Columbus statue in my district, which is another statue that is quite, so I, I guess I'm curious, where are we, and the Columbus one is significantly larger, I believe, correct?
Correct.
Than the Stephen Foster one? Where do we keep this, the Stephen Foster statue now?
I believe it's located in a DPW yard in Highland Park.
Is it inside or outside?
It's, it's in a crate.
In a crate.
Outside, but protected.
Okay, okay, and, if you happen to know, what was the cost of, like, taking it down and moving, you know, putting it in that crate and get, I'm just curious?
I don't have that information available.
You don't know, okay, I'm just, this is, I'm thinking, because I know that this is going to come up for me at some point.
It was through the Department of Public Works.
Right, right, okay, I'll, I'll ask about that when the time comes, but I know there's a, some legal, there's a lawsuit at the moment around the other statue and...
Yes, but per Steve, moving the Stephen Foster statue, that will all be taken care of through...
By the museum?
Yes.
By the museum?
Yep.
Okay, okay. That, that's all, I just was curious in relation to that other statue, so, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Kevin, you just answered my main question, or, they're paying for the transportation costs, of course, are they paying us on top of that?
No.
No.
They are not.
So we are lending them the statue, they're coming, they're getting it, they're shipping it, at no cost to us whatsoever?
The cost of the city is paying for a audit, an auditor to assess the statue for insurance purposes.
Auditor is going to do what?
Assess the value of the statue.
Before they ship it to the museum?
Yes, for insurance purposes. So if anything is damaged, we know the value of the statue to be reimbursed.
It seems hypocritical to me that we are putting this thing in a museum somewhere, lending it to a museum, but we have a problem putting it up in our own property.
The exhibit is specifically regarding decommissioned works of art across the country.
Still, people come see it, that's why, right? There's a knack, I guess there's a market for going to see decommissioned artwork, right?
Presumably.
It's funny, okay, so, why are we paying for the auditor?
To assess what the...
I know that, but I mean, why are we paying, why don't they pay for it? Why, why is it any cost to us whatsoever?
Good question, and I can bring that up to the contract.
How much would that cost, do we know?
Approximately $600.
$600 bucks? $600, $600, I mean, when we could just leave it in a warehouse, with no cost, so. I'll abstain today, I guess, but I'd like for that museum, I don't, I'm not against if you want to send it to Museum of Misfits, or whatever you want to call it, you know, but, you know, but, but in the meantime, let's let them pay the auditor if they want it in their museum, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Christmas. Remember that?
Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1753, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye, I mean, abstain.
One abstention. Affirmative recommendation. Thanks very much, Kevin. That moves us on to Bill 1770.
Bill 1770, ordinance supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title VI Conduct, Article I, Regulated Rights and Actions, Chapter 609, Weeds and Grass, by creating a new Section 609.08, Managed Natural Landscapes, to allow for the planting and maintenance of managed natural landscapes by residents.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
With discussion, Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I'll defer to the bill sponsor, I'm curious to know what the bill does.
Yeah, sure, I actually, well, two things, one is, could we add, I'm sorry, this didn't get communicated, could we add Councilwoman Strasburger, Councilman Coghill, Councilman Mosley, and Councilman Lavelle as cosponsors?
And myself, please.
And Councilwoman Gross as cos, I apologize, that didn't get communicated. I would act, oh, and, and if, so the two bills together, I would actually like to motion to hold for two weeks.
Okay, would you, we've already read one bill, we've started deliberation on one, would you like us to read both those together and take them together?
Yeah, let's read them both, because they go together.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind, Madam Clerk.
Bill 1771, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh City Code Title X, Building, Chapter 1004, International Property Maintenance Code Adoption, Section 1004.02, Changes Specified to Allow for the Planting and Maintenance of Managed Natural Landscapes by Residents.
Thank you. Councilmember Warwick.
Yeah, so just quickly, because again, I would like to hold for, for two weeks, PLI had some, had some last-minute things that they wanted to clarify, but essentially, this bill would allow residents who want to create, you know, grow managed natural landscape, which is like rain gardens, or pollinator gardens, or, you know, whatnot, to, to be able to register those with PLI, so that they don't have the issue of folks calling them in, you know, thinking that their gardens are, you know, weeds and overgrowth and whatnot, so to register those, and then that way, it just sort of cuts down on...
What a weed whacker.
Come, well, also, and, and just getting, you know, if, if someone isn't sure and, you know, files a, a 3-1-1, that, that PLI can then see that, that it is a, that it's a registered natural landscape, and we can talk more about it, I'm happy to answer any questions, but this sort of came out of, there was a, a city paper article a while back that sort of raised this issue of folks were getting, were getting PLI, you know, were getting violations and having to come and sort of, you know, go back and forth with PLI when they were really just doing a garden, because these don't look like your typical flower garden that, which is also allowed, right, but it doesn't look like your typical sort of classic flower garden, so it was just to kind of ease that process a little bit for folks. I'm happy to answer any, any questions.
Thank you. I think we had Councilperson Sharland next.
Yeah, I, I guess, I guess what I'm asking, going to ask for is interderogatory, but this, I, I had a similar discussion when we started to talk about quality of life ticketing. I believe actually it was from your constituents that really reached out to us, it's not, this is not something that happens, you know, in my part of town very much, but the, the concern was that, I, I guess, the way that we were looking at this was that we needed to talk to one of the agriculture experts, kind of about what to, what would qualify. My concern right now is, as we have entered the growing season, I, this morning, drive, drove through Pious Street, and there's, you know, a property that they're trying to build, and there's, you know, foot-tall grass already on there. What's stopping them from saying, oh, we're just naturalizing the yard here?
Well, so, yeah, well, so first of all, when you register, right, you have to, there's like, because there's native plants, right, so you, you indicate what you're growing, right, so it's a little more to it than just saying, ah, this is a natural landscape, and there are still rules, right, like it can't be blocking the right-of-way, it can't be, it can't have issues with rodents, I mean, there's things that, that are still baked in, so that if someone is being devious and using this as a, as a, an excuse to not maintain their property, then that would be, that, that could be addressed by PLI.
Are grass and weeds native plants?
Um, I, you know, I will have to look at, I am not a gardener myself, but...
I, I know that, not to use the pun, but this becomes a very thorny issue, when we looked at this, I mean, it was like three years ago, I guess, quality of life ticketing of like, you know, Penn State Agriculture reached out to us, and they had some suggestions, but I, you know, I understand the desire to do this, I'm also worried about this being a get-out-of-jail-free card for slum lords, so, I'll be interested in learning more about it.
I, I mean, that's, I, that's an interesting idea. I would say that that would be something that we could address if we saw it happen, right, because we do have folks who want to do these gardens, and they're good for the environment, right, they're good for, you know, they get, with stormwater and, and all of that, and, you know, just overall, good for the city, so if we were to see that, and if we were to see like, you know, slum lords registering, although I don't, I mean, we'll see if they register their apartments with the, with the rental registry, and then register their, their yards as pollinator gardens, but if we do see that, that would seem like something that we could address.
Now you're really getting into the weeds.
Right.
The weeds are the thing, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Council.
All right, thank you.
But at any rate, I would like to hold, a motion to hold, if, if there's any further discussion, happy to answer questions.
Second.
Second, discussion on the, on the motion for a two-week hold?
Two-week hold, yeah, please.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say, I'm in full support, thank you for your work on this, thank you for including me as a cosponsor, and it's timely, because I know that there's also this movement that started, I think, in the UK called No Mow May, where people are encouraged just not, not to mow their lawns in May when the wildflowers are coming up, and then they kind of create their own little pollinator gardens, and then you can mow it, you can mow it in June, so it doesn't get too out of control, so. I've always wanted to get that going as well, I know it's hard, because we have to really get it, the, the word out to people and to neighbors and to 3-1-1 and to PLI, but that would be a really neat thing to get off the ground as well.
I, I do want to say one thing, for anybody who is worried about this, is I, I am not a gardener, and my mother was a gardener, and she used to like the English garden style, which is like just crazy flowers everywhere, and I used to, to get to the house when I was a kid, you had to like go through the rose bushes and whatever, so I, I am very cognizant that people do not want to have to do that, right, they do not want to be walking down the sidewalk, and, you know, having wet, you know, this and that hitting them in the face, that's something I don't like too, so, I do want to make it clear that that's not what this is, right, you still need to keep it, keep it together, keep it on your property, and this is just so that folks can, you know, register it and let the city know that that is what they're doing.
Any further discussion on a two-week hold? Seeing none, all those in favor of a two-week hold of bill, Bills 1770 and 1771, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Bills will be held for two weeks. That brings us to our last committee of the day, Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee chaired by Councilman Mosley.
New papers, Bill 1747, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 7415 Hermitage Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15208, at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1747, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our standing committee's agenda, we do have some announcements. This afternoon at 2:00 PM, council will hold a cable cast post-agenda on the Oakland Business Improvement District that I will be chairing. And on Thursday, May 1st, with sessions at 11:00 AM and 12:00 PM, council will hold a briefing on paid trash cleanups contract. Next week, council will hold their regular meeting on Tuesday, May 6th, and their standing committee's meeting on Wednesday, May 7th, both at 10:00 AM. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline, you might also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there anything from members? Councilman Coghill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say thank you to our first responders, our firefighters, police, EMS, they were out all night, it was chaotic on my side of town, I don't know about your side, but we had roofs blown off, we had fires, we have trees down against main roads, still even today. We all saw what happened to the poor man up in South Side slopes. As a reminder, just, I ask everybody to be patient, Duquesne Light is overwhelmed at this point, they called in 200 extra suppliers from nearby communities, Cleveland, Akron, you name it, they're calling, all hands on deck, so, so, so they will get to you, but some people may be without power for three or four days, it's just the reality of it, it's really a, yeah, it was a crisis really, it was like a tornado ripped through some of my neighborhoods, so, reminder, do not touch any live wire, not touch any wires, period. You know, there, most of these trees brought wires down with it, and that's why it's taking a long time, it's not necessarily the city or the county, it's, you know, we have to, nobody can touch anything until Duquesne Light gets there, make sure it's safe, and the power is shut off, and the wires are, are out, so, so that's the main reason why, you know, people are going to be without power for three or four days, and hopefully this outside help will speed that along, but just a reminder, everybody to be safe. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Warwick, followed by Councilman Mosley.
Yeah, thank you, I just, yeah, wanted to echo what the councilman said, and thank our DPW crews and all our public safety crews, one thing is, if, if folks, I know not everybody's on social media, but if, just to sort of, you know, look at those posts from the city, from the, you know, from the, our public safety departments, et cetera, because that is going to be where we can get information out to people the quickest, I think, probably, and just to please call 911 if there is an emergency, because I know I had someone in my, you know, a tree had fallen, and it wasn't a city tree, couldn't get out of his house and his what, you know, so, but it's like, let us know, call 911, and, and also, please, if you don't have power, because I saw this a lot last night, it's very dark in the neighborhoods without power, it is very dark, so if you are out walking, I saw lots of people out walking, because, you know, it's sort of goes, sort of check things out, please wear lights, and again, be careful of wires and whatnot, and folks who are driving, also, please be careful, because folks are out there wa, I mean, for better or for worse, they're out there biking and wa, walking, and it is very, very dark in the streets without streetlights, so, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, echo my colleagues' kudos to, you know, all the hard-working folks at Duquesne Light, as well as Department of Public Works and DOME, and, you know, all involved stakeholders, you know, in addressing this, and I think one of the things that we need to be really clear about is that, you know, this wasn't a storm, you know, this was an unprecedented extreme weather event, and that's how we need to start talking about it in the age of climate change, you know, this wasn't, you know, a storm, I was on the phone with Emily Yonan from Duquesne Light this morning, and was going back and forth with her, you know, throughout the night, you know, and this is the worst storm in the history of Duquesne Light's history, they've never had, you know, this level of, of power outages, and so I think it's, it's just important to put it into that context, and that's why it's going to take multiple days, in some cases, I've heard, even maybe five to seven days, until some people get their power back, because this was an unprecedented extreme weather event, and, and we need to talk about these things in that context, so that we can make the investments we need to make to make our city more resilient, as these extreme weather events, you know... extreme weather events, you know, uh, multiply, um, you know, and, and, and impact, you know, our infrastructure as well as, you know, our, our daily lives, you know. And, and every time these events happen, you know, everybody is, you know, blown away how quickly we go back to the 19th century, um, you know, within, within a matter of 15, 20 minutes. Um, so it's so important that folks follow the instructions that, that my, uh, colleagues have talked about, um, you know. Be careful because more than likely, in many places around the city and around the region, it's going to be another dark night. Um, so, you know, be very careful, um, you know, and follow the, the instructions. Um, and, you know, feel free, um, to reach out to us. You know, we have a text line if it's non-emergency, you know, info that you want to get. Because I know Duquesne Light's, you know, website, um, you know, was overwhelmed. And, um, so folks were texting, our text line, 412-239-9990. And I was getting information over to DPW, as well as Duquesne Light, but non-emergency. If it's an emergency, call 911. But, you know, if your street is blocked off or something that may have not gotten on DPW or Duquesne Light's radar, um, you know, let us know. But, you know, everyone, you know, stay safe and hopefully in the next few days, particularly with the extra resources that have been brought in, the extra workers, you know, we can, um, you know, get back to the 21st century as soon as possible.
Thank you. Thank you all. I'll echo all your sentiments. Are there, is there any other discussion, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So, move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.